Good evening. We are now going to call to order the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Working Session for July 13, 2023. And our first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of May 11, 2023. And I so moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about the minutes? And if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes carry. So on tonight's agenda, we have three items, the third of which is a conditional use hearing. And we will be taking public comment about that during the hearing itself. So we will now open it up for public comment on the first two matters on the agenda this evening, items A and B. Public comment on item, agenda items A and B. On item C, we will be taking that comment during the conditional use hearing itself.
What's A and B?
As listed on the agenda, the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan.
Okay.
And the preliminary final land development for 2620 West Moreland Road.
Final land, okay, for West Moreland Road, okay. So let's start there with the West Moreland Road, raising canes, okay? They went to the Planning Commission and had not notified the neighbors. I asked if notification was required, and they said, oh, no. And then I said to Mr. Rosen in the Strack House, I said, I thought we had added notification being required for Planning Commission meetings. They said, oh, I think that's coming up to be approved. Well, it's been approved already, okay? Now, they came back to the Planning Commission. Do we know for a fact? Do we know for a fact, Mr. Manfredi? Do we have a way of knowing for a fact that they did notify the neighbors? Because I talked to some of the neighbors, and they didn't seem to know about it. So I'll ask you to ask Mr. Manfredi if we know for a fact that the second time they came, whether that was to repeat and fix what they hadn't done, or whether it was new information and they had or had not notified the neighbors. So can we find that out, please?
Mr. Manfredi, was there a second notification as part of this process?
I've been informed that there was.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would like to hope, because this happened at the zoning for Nifty 50s as well, and is happening regularly, and so I would like to make sure that we have a checklist that one of the things reported at the meeting is that, yes, we notified people, we notified them in this manner on this date, and here's how many people we notified, and we're giving you a list. So, because too much of that kind of stuff is going on in the township. The second thing is the Parks and Recreation and Open Space. I don't see Jane back here, so...
No, she left.
Oh, did she leave?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
And if she's out there, then we'll invite her to make her comments.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's willing to walk out and look for the lady in the yellow shirt. Okay, so if she come, if I find her and she comes back in, maybe you'll let her speak. So I would just like to agree with her on that. It's my understanding that one of the main impetuses for allowing other townships to use the park is strictly because there's grant money available if we allow the park, the federal grant money, I think it is, if we allow the park to be open to everybody, and there's not if we don't. So I was a regular walking in the morning at Lorimer Park, which is a mile from my house. Absolutely beautiful walk. As that area got more and more crowded, there were so many people there, I was absolutely not safe in the morning. There were men fishing for their breakfast in the river, and we had, it was definitely not safe. Alverthorpe is a treasured park, and it absolutely should not be open to everybody. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a guest policy. I think people who have friends who live nearby in Shelton Ham and Jenkentown should be allowed to bring them. But especially concerns me that this decision might be being made for grant money, because there's enough development in our parks. Briar Bush has been developed to the point where you can see all the houses. It used to be a nice wooded area. Also, in the Parks and Recreation, the Boy Scout Preserve is an absolute disaster, Mr. Manfredi, I hope you'll pay attention. We had, we had the excuse when they went in there and cut down all the trees and took the thing down to mud. We had the excuse that there were dangerous trees that were there, and they had to take them out because they might fall on somebody. Well, number one, it's a nature preserve, it's not supposed to have people in there. And number two, we left all the dead trees in there. One of them just fell in this last storm. And the, the park, first of all, is all weeds now, because you took it down to the mud, didn't replace it with native plants. Anybody listening? Because a lot of you are working on your computers and your cell phones.
You're close to the end of your time.
No, these are my, these are my comments, okay?
I understand.
So it's very important that my comments get heard. So, Mr. Weingrad, I so appreciate having eye contact with you. Ms. Vaughn, I appreciate having eye contact with you.
Ms. Lehman, I advise you to conclude your comments.
Okay, so we need to have the dead trees removed, Mr. Manfredi, as soon as possible. And we have a slush fund for the, for the construction team. In other words, a fund that they're given, for instance, $100,000 in a budget with no specific plan. There's a plan for it. Please, let's get that park made back so that the animals can live in it as it was attended by deed. Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn's not going to look up, and Mr. Wondr is not.
Ms. Lehman, you are not to engage that way.
No, you are not allowed to control my speech. You're not allowed to control what I say.
You are to address the presiding officer of the meeting.
You can tell me that my time is up.
And your time is up, and I ask you to please...
My time is up, I agree with that, but you may not control what I say. That is not allowed.
You are to address the presiding officer when making comments during the meeting. Please, please take your seat.
Well, the presiding officer should be addressing the other people who are not paying any attention whatsoever. That has to stop in this township.
Please take your seat.
There is no respect whatsoever. Thank you.
Please take your seat. Are there any other residents who wish to speak to the items A or B on the agenda? And I don't believe there's anybody on Zoom. Sarah, please come forward. Please just state your name for the record.
My name is Vincent Kelly. I live on Kirkwood Street, button up against St. Basil's Academy. I was disappointed to hear a couple months ago that the township was considering investing $20 million in Parks and Recreation. I wasn't disappointed in the fact that you're investing the money in Parks and Recreation. I grew up one of 10 in Fox Chase. We were lower income. We all worked at the playground. My children worked at Alverthorpe Park all through high school. They all have done very well in college. But with that being said, I think the township has to keep a stronger eye on institutions that may be struggling. St. Basil's over the last 10 years, their enrollment dwindled. I understand in the process of redevelopment, we're moving forward to allow for development, but there's 43 acres of open space there that, when the township talks about reinvesting $20 million in Parks and Recreation, and then they allow that property to slip through the cracks because we weren't paying attention, that would have been a perfect opportunity to save open space, to create more recreation development, and to enhance our township and the beautification of our township. That being said, you know, I understand progress is progress, but in the future, when we talk about economic development, we have to take focus to retain open space. Like you mentioned with the economic development, we have limited open space, so we need to redevelop these areas that have been successful in the past. Well, we can't also allow for the open space to disappear in light of development when there's a prime opportunity. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property, and, you know, we're going to allow it to become homes in the over 55 community, and, you know, I understand that, but, you know, when it's all redeveloped, and we all say, wow, it would have been nice if we could add some more open space, it's too late then. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. It looks like we have one resident on Zoom.
Ross A., you're unmet.
Hi, Ross Abel, Upland Avenue. I wanted to say specifically on the Parks and Open Space Plan, personally, myself and our group, Jenkentown Abington neighbors support the opening up of Alverthorpe. I think it's exclusionary to have been so restrictive to only Abington neighbors for so long, especially when so many people around us who live so close by the park can't access this great green space that I think they truly deserve just as neighbors to be able to enjoy. And separately, I think, just access to the park itself from neighbors in Abington and beyond, I think is critical. It's very difficult to walk or bike to get into it currently, and you currently have to more so rely on a car to get in. And that, to myself and others, is just kind of a funny thing for people to live across the street from a great park like this and not be able to easily access it. So I, I love that the plan adds additional access points to be able to utilize the park. But that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. I believe we have one more resident on Zoom.
Liz Kerr, you're unmuted.
Hi, I live on Parris Avenue, two blocks away from Alverthorpe Park. This is the first I'm hearing that the commissioners may be opening that up to residents up at Abington. We, prior to moving here, we lived across the street from the Shelton Ham Public Pool on Church Road, and we were never allowed to use that, as much as my kids would have loved to use that pool. So people who were saying, oh, well, we live near Alverthorpe, you're not paying for that park. And I accepted before we lived near the Shelton Ham Pool that my family couldn't use it because I knew I was Shelton Ham taxpayer. So people who were saying, oh, well, we have the right, no, you don't, you're not paying it. I'm sitting here, I just got my bill today from Jay Blumenthal, the tax collector, you know, it's right on my dining room table, and I'm sitting here about to, you know, send that in and listening to people saying that they should use a park that I'm paying for. So hopefully, you won't do that. It's been a pristine park all these years because you've maintained it for township residents. So please, let us have something for our township residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, we will move on to new business, item A, Presentation of the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan. And Manager Manfredi, do you want to make the introduction?
Ms. Leeper? So as everyone knows, Simone Collins was selected to work with the Recreation Park and Open Space Committee led by Commissioner Vehe, and I think out of respect for Commissioner Vehe, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, well, first, it's just been an immense pleasure working with both of you. Your credibly responsive to the residents, worked really well with the committee that was set up to help guide the plan, so really appreciate your dedication, hard work, and also really appreciate you hanging out for two and a half hours until your time came tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehe, and your fellow commissioners, thank you for picking Simone Collins to do the work. Sarah Leeper is with me tonight, she's, was the project manager for this project. She's recently become our partner, and if you don't know, she's your neighbor. So I'm going to turn this over to Sarah in one second, but I'd like to personally commend your leadership and your township committee, one of the best I've ever seen, smart, dedicated, and ready to work into the future. It wasn't, it's not just a do it and go home. So you have a lot of good talent there, and if you ever need us to help you again in the future, we'd be happy to do that. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Bill. So just to kind of start us off here, we just wanted to review the project schedule. You know, we started back in September of 2022 with our advisory committee. Throughout the process, we had five advisory committee meetings. We also had three public meetings, programming and brainstorming in October. We went over initial concepts in January of '23, and then the draft plan was presented in April. The draft plan was posted on the township website in, excuse me, June for public comment. We did receive responses to that draft plan, and all, we had 29 comments that were formally submitted. But throughout the whole process, we did the public opinion survey. We had over 1,000 responses, which was outstanding. All the commissioners, you guys did a really good job getting word out on that. And we also conducted key person and agency interviews. We had five focus group meetings, and then as well as the public meetings and advisory committee meetings were open to the public. So in all, we had over 2,000, or I'm sorry, 1,200 public points of interaction. We are going to kind of go over just how we organize the plan. We do see this as a tool that really moves forward into the future with you. This is just the table of contents. You know, we're going to focus tonight on how we organize recommendations so that it's really an active kind of matrix for you to move forward as you want to pursue different recommendations in the plan. I think both advisory committee and us as your consultants will say this is a very aspirational plan. It outlines many recommendations to kind of move various aspects of open space forward. But with that, we give you a tool to kind of track what are the priorities within the township. So we'll focus on recommendations, but there is a full inventory analysis that really goes into where these recommendations are coming from. Within the recommendations, they are organized by vision, goals, objectives, and then the recommendations themselves. In all, there's five visions, and these visions are kind of reworked to look at kind of the future township goals and objectives, but kind of build off of the 2006 plan. In terms of kind of how Chapter Three starts off, we kind of have a condensed version of what we call the Action Plan Matrix. This matrix is an Excel spreadsheet that we will share with the township that kind of gets into more detail of where you might get funding from, what might be a partner in each recommendation. But within the vision chapter, you know, we start off with each vision. Again, we kind of like to keep those goals and objectives throughout every page of this chapter, so you kind of understand where these visions are coming from. Vision one is to preserve and enhance environmental resources. We kind of give an overview of that, and then we delve into the five recommendations that support that vision. So we're going to kind of go through each vision, and then I'll show examples of how those recommendations are addressed. Vision two is stewardship of park resources. So this has to do with both your facilities in terms of athletics, but also the natural resources themselves. There were seven recommendations with that vision. Vision three is improve multimodal and universal access in Parks and Recreation amenities. The township has a bike and trail plan, it's a great, we completed that in 2017. This vision really focuses on how do we get adjacent neighbors right to the park? You know, what are the barriers that are keeping people from crossing the street? What are the barriers within the actual park? So this really starts to focus on not just how do we make connections between our parks, but also how do we get people through our parks? Vision four looks at create new recreation facilities and programming. I think this is what a lot of people think of when they think of a Recreation Open Space Plan, what's going to be new? So this kind of looks at what are the trends currently, where would they maybe appropriately be addressed within the township moving forward? And then vision five is looking at administrative procedures for the township and seeing how we can make sure they're streamlined and they're functioning as well as possible. So with each vision, we do kind of go into the individual recommendations. And what we try to do with the recommendations, again, we kind of give what, kind of in the top of the page in red is what the kind of action items are. And then we provide narrative that kind of pulls in some of the key side analysis points, as well as kind of the thought process behind it. So I kind of use this vision or this recommendation as an example. It's to work with private landowners to develop and strengthen and protect your riparian corridors. And, you know, some of the narrative, what we started to look at in Abington, you know, you have three watersheds, you sit at the top of three major watersheds that all feed into the Delaware River. We added up all your streams. You have over 28 miles of stream corridor within Abington. That takes you from 95 to the airport, I'm sorry, from the turnpike to the airport on 95. That's a long distance, and the township can't be the steward of those alone. You have to kind of educate and work with your private landowners to kind of make sure we're stewarding that resource, because it's a very important resource. So again, this kind of ties into the mapping. This builds off the analysis mapping for this one in general. We kind of popped up those streams, so you really start to see those stream layers. So an example is the Meadowbrook Corridor. You know, a lot of open space has been preserved along those streams, but you can see all the feeder streams that kind of go up into the single-family housing that feed into Meadowbrook. So that's kind of where we're focusing on working with those landowners to make sure that we're creating riparian buffers in those areas. A second recommendation that we just kind of used as an example was to improve access to and within parks. So this kind of builds off of Vision Three. So again, you can kind of see what is that key action in red, and then some narrative. And then this, I pulled out as an example because it starts to give you definitions, you know, what is a curve extension? What is a raised crosswalk? What is a rectangular rapid flashing beacons? These are all lingo's that people throw out in meetings, but sometimes we don't always know what they are. So we really kind of see this as a living document that you guys can pull off the shelf and really quickly identify a priority project and figure out how to pursue funding for it. On that note, looking at the implementation, this is the final chapter, really kind of looked at how you address projects. And we really think when you look at open space projects, one, improvements are going to be made in phases, and they're going to be made with partners. Again, the township isn't able to accomplish this all by themselves, but they have great partners in their watershed associations, they have great partners within the state and the county as well. And then last, when you look at recreation as an improvement, it's not just the recreation improvement itself. It's an environmental improvement, it's a civic improvement, and it's a transportation improvement. So whenever you're looking at a transportation enhancement program, you should also be looking at how can this improve our recreation within the township? How can it improve our open space within the township? So we kind of looked at, when we look at kind of the funding strategies, we start to identify those potential funding formulas. So in something like, we'll kind of look at that Meadowbrook, one of the big ideas was how can we look at Meadowbrook as a neighborhood where there's not a lot of park facilities, yet they're not that far from the Pennypack Trail? How can we connect those two together? Well, you have multiple partners within the county, within, sorry, Pennypack Ecological Trust, you have private landowners that are looking at property. How can we look at making that connection altogether and also address things like stormwater in the Meadowbrook community at the same time? So, you know, we look at multiple funding sources that could kind of start to pull together a big project in that type of magnitude. Last thing that we did include in Chapter Four is just an order of magnitude cost. So again, this kind of looks at like a menu item list of kind of what types of dollars are we talking about when we talk about specific things? So this looks at facilities, it looks at kind of connection improvements, as well as professional services. So, you know, some of the things in this plan, some of the recommendations are to do a master plan. I know we looked at kind of the larger parks, and, you know, Roychester in the draft plan phase, we got a lot of feedback on some of the kind of conceptual recommendations we made for Roychester. You know, the main recommendation of the plan is to do a master plan for Roychester, because a lot of our parks are older within the township, they haven't been planned for in a very long time, and kind of understanding what the community wants in that specific location is what would be required before actually pursuing a large improvement in that facility. So with that, I will just end on the overall map, looking at kind of recommendations of where we're suggesting identifying things for open space in terms of an official map, which we do kind of expand upon that, and that kind of goes to the one gentleman's comment in terms of looking at institutions that maybe won't be around forever. Are there potential open space locations that the township should identify on a map? And it doesn't mean the township has to acquire it, but it might mean that the township has a voice at the table when that land gets redeveloped. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
So thank you. It was an excellent presentation, and I want to echo the sentiments that were raised earlier. I mean, this was an incredibly well-run process, Matt, and I think it provides a foundation here for us, as Bill mentioned earlier tonight, married up with the strategic plan, for us to have a framework to make important investment decisions moving forward that will really enhance the caliber of the community. So I'm excited to see how this moves forward. And with that, I will open it up to the board for any comments or questions that you might Commissioner Carswell and Commissioner Brown.
Just share that Roychester's in my ward, and the timing of this draft being available for people to read was coexisted with the rep, I was going to say repaving, I'm not too sure of the technical term, but, you know, the upkeep, the improvement of the basketball court and tennis court, which caused quite a flurry. But I see my job as a commissioner on social media to help fix myth-busting, I guess, get it out there and help people understand. And actually, people were thrilled. People then got into this more and realized this is really about making sure that our parks are in great shape for the long run, that we're trying to consciously look at where can we, where can we add value for people to utilize and enjoy of all ages and abilities? But that we also are talking about, like, well, what does it look like to set aside resources to preserve open space? Yeah, I mean, if we could have bought St. Basil's, if we could have, you know, before whole neighborhoods were built in the 1950s, things would look really different. And so I love that we are, we have this resource and that we're looking at being able to plan for the future. So thank you, I really appreciate. And I know that the neighbors around Roychester are as adamant lovers of Roychester as those around Alverthorpe and other parks, and a lot of the folks that I've talked to are really thrilled about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Carswell. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on the project. How much work was given from a, from a sports, actually, I'm a sports fan. Try to represent whenever I can. And I'm a coach with the Abington Raiders, longtime organization in the township. You know, trying to envisioning what that looks like, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now, you know, as popular as sports like football and soccer continue to grow in popularity, and youth sports continues to grow, you know, how, how much are we looking at that as in this, in this plan? So that as organizations continue to grow, as we're looking at youth sports as being almost like a pipeline? I know there's other schools, you know, in the area, but I'm a fan of public education, married into public education, come from public educators. Youth sports can be a way to maintain families in the public school system. You know, how much of that is going into this plan?
Yeah, definitely. So we, one of our focus group meetings was with all the sports groups that serve the Abington community, and as you're probably well aware, it's, I think it's in double digits, probably up to 20 individual groups. In our analysis phase, we looked at all the current fields, and we looked at, are they oriented properly? Do they meet modern safety zone standards, things like? That was one of the big discussions, is the football field at Alverthorpe. You know, you are just at the five-foot or the 10-foot buffer on your safety zones on your sidelines, and you're also overlapping infield, which isn't necessarily ideal for a football play. But, so we kind of did that as an inventory. The tricky part is, you know, when you look at how youth sports have evolved over even just the past 20 years, which doesn't seem like a long time, but it is a long time, people are starting younger. So instead of starting at eight or nine, you're starting at five or seven, and you're playing full seasons. Like you're not just playing in the spring, baseball, fall soccer. Baseball's being played year-round, soccer gets played year-round. So that's putting a lot of stress on the current field network, right? And all your fields, when they were envisioned, they were often overlaid. I think there's very few fields in the township where soccer and baseball don't serve in the same space. So there is an issue there where, and it's hard to address because like we said, land just doesn't exist, you know, we're not, we've heard 98% a lot tonight. So you know, what the plan looks at is identifies that this is something that needs to be focused on. And some of the answers might be that it requires pulling back and taking back some pavement space, you know? If Willow Grove Mall were really truly completely redeveloped, do you get a park out of that? You know, do we get the baseball complex that we need or the soccer complex that we need within that area? So those are kind of some of the big questions that this plan doesn't tell you that's what you should do, but it lays out that those are the decisions that you need to start being making because field usage, yeah.
Yeah. This is where it can overlap with economic development, right? Where you start to, Sarah mentioned the official map. You start to put the things that you'd like to see, like stormwater management and greenery and open space and recreation facilities on the map. And that, and that identifies where you think you'd like to see something. If Willow Grove redevelops, it shouldn't be a repeat of what it is. It can't be. But what does the township want to see? Now's your chance to, to think that. Maybe that's a vision plan.
Agree.
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thanks. So my ward is directly adjacent to Lorimer Park. And I don't recall anybody from your organization reaching out to anybody in my ward, any of the property owners or anybody in my neighborhood about this development or what the impact upon my ward would be. Why not?
I'm, I'm sorry, the development of?
Whatever is your plan to do here with yours, your, your open space recommendations, whatnot, it's going to have direct impact upon my ward and people who reside in my direct neighborhood, in my direct ward.
Okay.
They would like to know what's going on and I can't inform them if I don't have communication from you guys and why not? What's the issue?
Commissioner Brodsky, I'm a bit confused by your question because there's no actual plan being developed for Lorimer Park.
There's no confusion. It's confusion. I just, I would like to be involved in that process and apparently because my ward is adjacent to Lorimer Park, I'd like to have some idea what's going on in the neighbor's backyards.
Sure.
So there is currently an RFP out for a master plan for Lorimer Park? That is completely separate and that's being run by the county. Is that what you're referring to?
Nope. What you guys feel and what you're impacted by.
Okay.
Sorry, what you're impacted by in Lorimer Park? I want to know. I'd like to see some details.
Okay. So in this plan, we acknowledge that Lorimer Park is a county park. As a county park, we recognize them as a partner in the Abington Township's recreational community, but the plan does not make any recommendations for the park itself because it's not owned by Abington Township.
So what communications have gone on between you and the relevant organizations that you have to deal with? If any?
Again, since Lorimer Park's not a township park, we aren't making plans for Lorimer in this, in this document.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're struggling to understand the basis of your question here.
We did meet with the Montgomery County Planning Commission and we reviewed the recommendations and kind of concept level of what we're looking at in this plan to get their feedback on it. They did not give any moshe or intention that we should look at anything in Lorimer Park within this plan.
I don't think you know that.
Okay.
Commissioner Bowman.
Well, a few years ago, we polled the commissioners about their priorities and certainly parks was top of the list. So I'm excited that this has come along. It certainly started in a, as a little kernel, but it's certainly grown large. So we're glad to have it and I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Any other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Rothman.
I, I know there's, there's a lot in here about, about Alphathorpe Park. Thank you. Technology's not my thing. You heard a few of my, it's all right. A quick overview of the vision for Alphathorpe Park. Just, there, there's a lot, obviously, that's there. There's a lot that we can do. If you were looking at just taking out two or three pieces, the most easily accomplished dynamics, I know there are limitations with grant and, and all kinds of other dynamics there. But I get a lot of good ideas from that and I encourage so many people to, to share them with you in the, in the survey in particular. But in, in your area of specialization, what do you think is the, the most feasible from a, if we don't have to really hope that we get lucky with, whether it be a grant or donations or whatever it might be, that we can do with what's there right now?
Yeah. I think when you look at the facilities of the park, one really cool facility that the park offers within the township is camping, but it's very outdated. And I think that's an easy thing to, it wouldn't be a large ticket item to really upgrade those campsites, make some accessible. Maybe there's a direct connection from the water to the campsite that is accessible so that you kind of have that kind of, you know, symbiotic relationship between fishing and camping, things like that. You know, at-home recreation and being able to take your family on a vacation close to home and not have to spend a lot of money is a really big thing right now. So a bigger ticket item, but something that is recommended in prior studies, it was recommended in the '06, is the conversion of the splash, the wading pool into a splash pad. That's, you know, that's a big ticket. But from talking with the young parents group, from talking in public meetings, you know, the wading pool has its issues. They're not a trend anymore and most people would rather be able to kind of take their kids and run around and play and not have to worry about depths of water when, yeah. And then the last is just, again, and I know this is a very kind of topic that each commissioner probably has an opinion about and citizens have an opinion about, but just looking at how you can get people, Abington residents, into the park without having to, you know, drive there. So how do we make those connections and how do we truly create a multimodal community where people can, kids can bike into the park from any direction?
Yeah, I mean, I think all of that makes sense. And when you think of places that you go and really like or you go do something, I would probably never be seen camping, but I respect those that do because I could barely tie my shoes or get this set right. But hey, look, you gotta know yourself, right? But I'm not elected to represent me, otherwise I'd be like, what? Camping's a terrible idea, but I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it, it's really amazing how much is already there at Alphathorpe. It's almost like, you know, you're not working with a blank canvas without utensils. You work with a blank canvas with a ton of utensils. So yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate, and I'm really proud of the, the time and effort that the, the committee put in and working with you, but also we, there's a lot of apathy in, in, in some of the things that we, you know, some people come to us and say, oh, it'd be great if we did this or did that. But the amount of response on the survey is really, you know, that, that's, that's helpful. It gives us more direction and obviously helps you guys a little bit with, with what people want. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Henry.
So I'm looking at all this and it's very exciting and I feel so like right here for me, I'm starting to become inspired about other things that aren't up there that could be, that are inspired by things that are up there that might be and might be prioritized. So I just wanted to put it out there that this very well might spur new ideas, new things that might, you know, they're not necessarily here right now, but I'd like to just put it out there that, that that could also be a priority, you know, part of the conversation at least.
That would be terrific. Other comments or questions? Okay. With that, we thank you for your work and for your attendance here this evening.
Yes, thank you for your time.
I want to thank the staff working with Mr. Manfredi and his staff.
Thank you. And Sarah, congratulations on your promotion. Ms. Lehman, the public comment period has.
This is, this is an objection under the Sunshine Law and you need to understand, I, I want to make it really clear, that you putting meetings in this working session format.
Lehman, what section of the Sunshine Act are you claiming has been violated?
Seven-ten.
No, seven-ten is the objection portion of the Sunshine Act. What specific section of the Sunshine Act are you saying has been violated?
I'm pretty sure I didn't read anywhere in there that you're, you're allowed to.
Well, you're also not allowed to get up and just start giving public comment anytime you want, under the guise of saying it's a violation of the Sunshine Act.
It is a violation of our speaking rights.
Okay, you've noted, please note what, what violation of the Sunshine Act that you were saying.
I understand you don't believe it is, but these are my comments and I believe they are.
What, what section of the Sunshine Act has been violated?
So by putting it in a working session.
Mr. Hecker, you can, you can ask the speaker to sit.
Please, please sit down.
The Sunshine Law requires you to hear my objection.
What?
By putting it in a working session.
No, that's not a section of the Sunshine Act.
You, you get five minutes to speak before you even see what the item is. This presentation did not happen and I would like you to, to make this.
There will be plenty of opportunity to talk about this plan. Please sit down.
Not a working session.
Please sit down. Manager Manfredi, I just want to ask a question. So we're going to move on to Item B. And as this is a non-voting meeting, we're not actually making a motion to approve this. This, right? I mean, the, the motion is written, this is a motion to approve the preliminary final land development plan. We do not, at these meetings, I mean, we, we can say that it's ready to move consensus that we believe it's ready to move forward to the next step.
Correct.
But we're not making a motion.
That is correct.
Okay.
This will be listed on a future agenda.
Yep.
This is the present page.
This is the presentation. So would you like to, could you make the introduction, Manager Manfredi?
Can we pull up the aerial first, actually? There's a, I think I sent in an aerial photograph as well.
So before they begin, to be clear, what you're considering is what will be at the next meeting where you'll actually vote it?
Good evening.
Good evening. Rob Lewis from Kaplan Stewart.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Represent Raising Cane's Restaurants, the proposed tenant of the property that is the subject of this presentation. And President Hecker, I do agree, this was not intended to be an action item. This was merely a presentation. Our expectation also was that we would return next month, hopefully for action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up on the screen is an aerial view of the property, 2620 West Moreland Road, which is obviously adjacent to Willow Grove Park and Mall, right up against Moreland Road being the municipal boundary between Abington and Upper Moreland. And I think at the outset, I just wanted to point out that I know this is the first time I'm here in front of you about this project, but this project has been ongoing for almost 18 months already. So this is not new. We've been through the cycle a bit. So forgive me also if I'm not as detailed as I might have been. I'm happy to answer any questions that you do have. We've actually been to the zoning hearing board twice on this project. And as was pointed out during public comment, we've actually been to the planning commission twice. And in fact, public notice was given for that second trip to the planning commission and yet nobody appeared with any questions about the project. The planning commission, the first time we were there unanimously recommended a couple of modifications and waivers that are necessary for this plan, as well as unanimously recommended approval of the plan. They reaffirmed that last month when we returned. The property that is the subject of this proposal is a little bit more than an acre. Some of you may recall back in 2019, this property was the part of a, was a subdivision. It subdivided off a former parking lot that was no longer necessary from what, long ago was Kmart.
Okay.
And now is At Home.
At Home, yeah, that's, that's right.
And unfortunately, right now, it could use some dire attention. So hopefully this project gets moving and, and we get the parking lot cleaned up and get this developed. The project itself is relatively straightforward. We are proposing development of a Raising Cane's Restaurant. The restaurant itself is a little bit, it's 3,374 square feet with dual lane drive-throughs. The restaurant use itself is a permitted use and the drive-through facility was permitted by special exception and that was one of the items that we went to the zoning hearing board to have approved. The, the plan retains the existing driveway configurations. This property, although it does front on Moreland Road, actually doesn't have direct access to Moreland Road. Access to this property is by two existing driveways that serve At Home. Those driveways will continue to serve the Raising Cane's facility, which obviously with any type of drive-through facility, it's nice to have that scenario so that if there does happen to be any additional stacking, that stacking ends up being internal. It doesn't affect Moreland Road directly. To that point, the dual driveline facility is intended also to address that. We have stacking for more than 16 vehicles in those drive-through lanes. And as I mentioned, because of the configuration, should it exceed that, which we do not believe it will, that would be internal capture, both on our site and then also potentially at At Home. Because this is a parking lot today, impervious coverage here is more than 82%. This proposal will actually increase green space. We're bringing the impervious down to about 70.5%. So we are increasing green space. Almost all of that is frontage green space, so everybody will have the benefit of that. We're adding some public space to the plan as well. As you can see in the upper right-hand corner, there's some seating and some more pedestrian improvements. So the project will include pedestrian improvements, both from the adjoining residential neighborhood through our site and to the adjoining properties as well. We have been through at least two review sessions with the township's engineer, township's traffic engineer. Those review letters have been whittled down to very minor comments, all of which at this point are, will comply. I'm happy to go through any of those that you would like, probably easier just for us to answer any questions that you have. I do have available by Zoom, our engineer, our architect, our Raising Cane's representative. So I think between us all, we can answer any questions that commissioners might have.
So I'll open it up to see if there's questions. Commissioner Brown.
Do we have proposed hours of operations for the location?
We, we have proposed. We don't have formalized. Typically, Raising Cane's hours of operations are 10:00 AM each day. I think Sunday through Thursday, they are typically closed by 10:00 or 11:00 PM. Friday and Saturdays, they do tend to be open until midnight at most of their locations.
So it would be, it would be midnight for the, at the latest?
I, I cannot guarantee you that they will close at midnight. That is typical.
There an ordinance for closing times for food service in the township? I don't know, I'm sorry. I'm new to this, so.
No, no, I totally understand. And I do believe that there is an hours of operation restriction, but there are noise limit requirements within the township that we would have to abide by and those get more stringent in the evening hours, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm just more so concerned about, you know, if you're the only place that's open late at night, people tend to come from a good ways away, you know, for what could be considered good food, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that could be a disturbance for the residents that I would want to.
There is, directly across the street used to be Wawa. It is a convenience store still. It is in Upper Moreland, but that is still there and I do believe that that may be open 24/7.
It is. It's the Lucky Seven.
Yeah, Lucky Seven is there.
I, I believe so, yeah.
I know the Wawa when it was there was 24/7.
Yeah, for, for sure. Commissioner Carswell.
I remember this space because oftentimes I'm going, I'm going to say northbound, whatever. I'm driving out of the town. I'm driving out of the township.
Westbound.
I don't have mountains to give me directions here. You're not proposing any change to that driveway. So right now, if you're going northbound, you can't turn left into there, correct? You would turn left further, again, I'm going to just--
West.
Make a, yeah, okay, great. Further down by the, like, triple A, somewhere over there, that intersection?
So, and I don't think, I can actually probably point to it on the screen better. So this is heading westbound, away from your home, Mr. Buckwell. I know that I do, right here as well. This is my travel work every day. So as well, Moreland Road. You have the ability to actually come in at any of the signalized intersections that serve At Home? They all have interconnection there. So Park Road and Circuit Court, all those intersections can be in through this facility for anybody who wishes to use a signalized intersection. Our, this driveway here, which we do not own, it's actually part of the At Home parcel. That does not permit a left turn in or a left turn out, it's right in, right out only. But the driveway to the western side of our property is a full-access intersection. So you can make rights and lefts out of that intersection, even though it is non-signalized. So there are several different ways to navigate into the site.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
I'm sorry. Trying to make former Commissioner Thompson proud here. Location of the dumpster and access to the dumpster is always a question that our fallen commissioner has always asked. So could you just educate us on that?
Sure. The dumpster location is in that western portion of the site here. It is fully enclosed, fully screened, gated, and will have locked gates. It is private trash hauling service that is arranged by Raising Cane's. Will not interfere with any of the stacking because they can arrange to have that done in off-hours.
Commissioner Henry.
I'm sorry, did you say what the timeline is for this? When are we expecting this to go into?
As soon as possible.
It'll, it will be coming through the August meeting for a formal, for a formal vote.
Okay. My younger son is going to be ecstatic about this, so he already knows, and he's ready to test it, yeah.
Yeah, no, so my biggest concern is whether I have to recuse myself because of my severe affinity for Raising Cane Chicken Tenders.
I do believe from a construction standpoint, obviously, the sooner we put it through the permanent approval process, the better, but I do believe it's on Raising Cane's calendar for a winter construction commencement, so.
You can ask whatever you'd like. I think we're all a little punch drunk at this point.
No, I was just asking when we were going to get the samples brought to the meeting.
I'll note that for next month, we'll see.
Yes. Hold on, get to, wait, did you have your hand up? No, all right. Commissioner Brown.
I just wanted to say about the, the time of the hours for the restaurant. I know this is Upper Dublin, but Wendy's is open till like 1:00 a.m. in all the locations. Upper Dublin, Shelton Ham, the Philly locations may stay open a little longer. I've had to frequent them late night. There's not a lot of traffic. If people are concerned about too much traffic or routiness or whatever, I know that will be, a lot of kids will be on the bandwagon initially to be there all the time. But I think just like Crumble was very, very packed in the beginning and then kind of titrated off as people got used to it being in the neighborhood. So I don't know that we have an ordinance on time, but just my two thoughts.
That does raise one important point, I think that's worth noting. We've all seen Chick-fil-A's open, we've seen other fast food restaurants open. They do expect a honeymoon period here, which usually lasts a few weeks, where you, they are very, very busy, and it's wonderful. They plan for that. They've done enough of these. They've done hundreds of these around the country. And so for that honeymoon period, they will actually work with the township and do a traffic management plan to make sure that during that honeymoon period, we're not affecting public roadways with traffic. They typically engage with either retired or off-duty police officers to manage traffic. And will do those kinds of things for those honeymoon periods.
Commissioner Weingrad, your short question.
Thank you, President Hecker. Your presentation comes off the heels of our open space plan where we're trying to talk, talk about walkability of the township here. This is obviously a very transit-oriented type development. And I understand you have dual lanes. You're trying dual--
Correct.
So to Commissioner Henry's point where kids are going to be walking around there, I mean, are you satisfied that there's pedestrian safety there? That, you know, what kind, and what kind of efforts have you made to make sure that kids are safe?
I, I think actually this design, even with a very constrained site, really actually facilitates the interaction between pedestrians and vehicles. If you notice, anytime you're either entering that drive-through lane or exiting it, you actually are at a turn and a stop-controlled intersection. So it would, it will ensure that vehicles do have to slow down. We are also now providing improved pedestrian connectivity, utilizing our site, starting in the western side. You come through that public space with some benches, places people can eat, and that will actually walk you all the way down to our outdoor seating and then connect you to the existing sidewalks and then allow you to go to, I guess Verizon is still there, I think, and Xfinity is still there. So there's a lot of pedestrian connectivity. So I think it actually does meet both of those goals. It's obviously functioning for a lot of vehicle traffic, but it will also be available for a lot of pedestrian traffic.
Thank you. Thank you. It's okay, Commissioner Henry. It's all for the children.
Outdoor seating and, and indoor seating, what's the capacity indoors?
I will have to get back to you on the number. But there is indoor, indoor seating. There's outdoor uncovered and outdoor covered seating, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. We appreciate your time this evening, and we look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So at this point in the evening, we're going to soon ask the solicitor to open a conditional use hearing for the application of Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company Incorporated for the property located at 711 Fox Chase Road in the Jenkin Town section of the township. As a reminder to the public, a conditional use hearing is part of the board's responsibilities under the township's zoning ordinance to review a particular request related to an aspect of the use of the property. In this instance, the applicant is requesting approval related to installing a central sewer line in Zone 2 of the Riparian Corridor Conservation District. This hearing is related solely to the request to install the central sewer line. At a future meeting of the board, there will be the opportunity for the applicant to present and for the board and the public to review specific details of the land development proposal for the site, including layout, traffic, and other aspects. However, those issues are not before the board this evening. This hearing, again, is solely related to the sewer line request, and I will ask the solicitor to remind any participants of that narrow focus in their comments. Mr. Clark, please open the conditional use hearing.
If we could have a motion to open the hearing, Commissioner Hecker.
Is there a motion to open the conditional use hearing? Has it been seconded?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. This is a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company, Inc. The property is located at 711 Fox Chase Road, Abington, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, and is identified as Montgomery County Tax Parcel numbers 30-00-22424-00-1 and 30-00-22420-00-5. This is an application requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Section 1503B2B of the Abington Township Zoning Ordinance to permit installation of a central sewer line in Zone 2 of the Riparian Corridor Conservation District in conjunction with the proposal to develop the property pursuant to the AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay District with 150 age-restricted, single-family attached carriage home dwelling units, accessory uses, and associated improvements. The applicant this evening is represented by Allison Zarro. And before I turn the hearing over to Ms. Zarro, I will ask if there is anyone in the room who is, or on Zoom, who is seeking party status for this conditional use hearing. Mr. Hecker, I see no hands in the room, and if someone can tell me whether anyone is-- and I'm being told that there are no hands being raised online, so Ms. Zarro, you may proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Allison Zarro, the firm of Riley Wright, her colleague, Colleen Greco, on behalf of Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company, Inc. I do have a premarked packet of exhibits that I can hand up to the board. I know we have them on the screen, but I might be here for you to see some of them close up, so if I may.
I think we're going to save you a little time and--
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you very much. Sorry, I was going to ask whether you wanted me to stand, but I think with my witnesses, thank you. So this evening, as Mr. Clark explained, we're here specifically with respect to a narrow conditional use pertaining to installation of a sanitary sewer line in the Riparian Buffer. This property, which was referenced earlier this evening, is the formal, former St. Basil's Academy property. And I know the board is already familiar with this. Previously, this board passed a zoning ordinance amendment to allow this to be developed under an AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay District. And the proposal is for 150 age-restricted carriage homes. That aspect of the development will be addressed separately as part of land development plans. And as noted earlier, we here, are here solely tonight seeking conditional use approval related to sanitary sewer installation. Prelimarily, the premarked packet of exhibits I've handed up to the board, Exhibit A1 is marked as the conditional use application with narrative and a cover letter from myself to the township dated March 27, 2023. Exhibit A2 is the Abington Township Zoning Ordinance Incorporated by reference. The other exhibits I will reference as I walk through the hearing. I do have two witnesses this evening. The first is Brian Thierin, who is a representative of the applicant, and then John Baiano from the civil engineering firm of ESE Consultants, which is the civil engineering firm for the project. So first, I'd like to have Mr. Thierin sworn.
I do. Good evening. My name is Brian Thierin, B-R-I-A-N, last name is Thierin, T-H-I-E-R-R-I-N, and I'm a senior vice president with Toll Brothers.
And have you been authorized to appear and make representations on behalf of the applicant this evening?
Yes, I have.
And based on the, a copy of Exhibit A3, which we have marked, which is a redacted agreement of sale between the Sisters of St. Basil the Great and Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company, Inc., is it, to the best of your knowledge, is this the copy of that agreement of sale?
Yes, it is.
And are, is Toll the equitable owner of the property?
Yes, we are.
And as I noted earlier, did you previously appear before this board to present a development proposal for this tract?
Yes, we previously sought and obtained an amendment to the zoning ordinance of Abington Township, which established the AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay District, as mentioned previously.
And we have marked as Exhibit A4, a, an active adult carriage homes site plan prepared by ESE Planning dated January 19, 2022. Just briefly for the board, could you explain what conceptually is proposed for development on this site and what's shown on this plan?
Yes, as, it's the former, obviously, the, the former St. Basil's Academy, a little over 46 acres. We propose to develop 150 kind of carriage-style, active adult homes with access coming off of Fox Chase Road.
And as we're here tonight on conditional use, have you also filed a land development application that is currently under review by the township consultants?
Yes.
And is the proposed development, to propose to be served by public sewer?
Yes, it is.
And could you explain to the board why you're seeking conditional use approval?
Yes, as, as mentioned previously, we have to connect sanitary sewer into an existing line and a manhole that's located in the Riparian Buffer Zone. You're not permitted to do that unless we get conditional use approval.
And is that generally on the, what I would call the northeast quadrant of the property?
That is correct.
And did you appear before the Township Planning Commission on May 23, 2023? And did the planning commission recommend, make a recommendation on this conditional use application?
Yes, they did recommend approval.
I have no further questions for Mr. Thierin. I will note that our civil engineer will go through the technical testimony on the requested conditional use.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the witness? Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. This plan that we've, you've identified as number four, is this the plan that you intend to submit for land development?
If I can clarify, this plan?
Yes, the conceptual plan.
Yeah, that, it's generally in line. The layout's still the same. It's fully engineered, but the layout is in general conformity with the plan in front of you.
Thank you.
Are we able to have something, like when an exhibit is referenced, show up there for either those watching from home or a resident in the back was trying to communicate with me as to what the, the plan was that we were talking about and--
Yeah, I didn't, not being technology driven myself, I didn't want to be touching equipment.
I'm right with you. I can drive here and back, but that's it.
We can also activate the document camera.
And the only reason, I don't think we need to, you know, it's like, for example, if someone references the contract, we don't need to scroll through, but-- If we're pointing to certain things that all of us can see and not the resident here or residents at home, that would be helpful. Sorry, guys, I know it's 10:15 at night. If we're really only going to be, I don't know what the witnesses plan to do, but it might be that they're only pointing to two different things, which would be these two, then just having them accessible to throw under there maybe if someone's finger is pointing at any specific question. It might not even happen. I just shouldn't be communicating with Vince in the back, like, as if you guys aren't all here. Sorry.
And, and just so the, the record is clear, what is up on the screen right now is essentially a conceptual plan. It is not the fully engineered plans that were reviewed by the township consultants and staff as part of the land development process. Other than where this sewer line is going to go, which I'm sure the next witness will speak of, they're, they're not really bound to this plan. They can change it, and you'll have an opportunity to review it in land development. They'll be bound where they're going to put the sewer line, which is why if you'll scroll back, you will see that the sewer line plans are much more technical in nature than the one that you have in front of you.
If anyone, if anyone else has, if there are no other questions, then I'll call my next witness. Next, I'd like to call John Baiano.
Good evening. My name is John Baiano, J-O-H-N-B-A-I-O-N-N-O. Yes, I do.
Mr. Baiano, could you please state your full name, employer, and position with that employer for the record, please?
Yes, my name is John Baiano. I'm employed by ESE Consultants. I've been in, they are addressed 1140 Virginia Drive, Fort Washington, PA.
And John, are you-- And John, are you a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes, I am.
And have you testified previously before municipal bodies such as zoning hearing boards and other boards and commissions regarding site plans and site engineering?
Yes, I have.
And we do have Mr. Baiano's CV marked as Exhibit A5. I could further address his qualifications, otherwise I'd like to offer him as an expert in civil engineering. Thank you. Mr. Baiano, are you familiar with the property as the subject of this application, its features, and the surrounding area?
Yes, I am.
And are you also familiar with the applicable regulations of the Abington Township Zoning Ordinance?
Yes.
And is your engineering firm responsible for this particular project?
Yes, it is.
First, I'd like to just touch on why we're here tonight. Does the Abington Township zoning ordinance regulate certain land such as riparian corridors near waterways in the townships, in this township?
Yes, the ordinance defines land adjacent to a waterway as a riparian buffer, which is comprised of two zones, Zone 1 and Zone 2.
And on this particular site, and first referring to Exhibit A4 that we have up on the screen, generally speaking, could you explain where the riparian corridor is on the property?
The corridor is along the north-easterly corner, as shown on Exhibit, the upper green portion, right along the tributary to Buckingham Creek.
And with respect to that corridor, and then referring to what we have marked as Exhibit A6, which is a conditional use plan dated March 2023, first of all, was your firm responsible for the preparation of that plan?
Yes, it was.
And referring to that particular plan, are the riparian buffer zones further delineated, particularly in the location where we're seeking conditional use approval tonight?
Yes, they are.
Referring to Exhibit A6, could you walk the board through that, and maybe before we do that, we should try to have that pulled up on the screen.
For ease of view, so I do have a pointer, and yes, it works. As I mentioned, this area is the northeast corner of the site, and we'll try to do this so my verbiage works for the court reporter as well as visually for the board. Along the channel, the creek, there is a riparian zone. Zone 1 is the initial 25 feet from the top of bank or high watermark, and that goes from the edge of the water up 25 feet typically. That's how Zone 1 is defined. It measures horizontally perpendicular to the stream. Zone 2 begins at the edge of Zone 1 and then goes a minimum of 50 feet, again, further away from the stream. Those are the two definitions of what Zone 1 and Zone 2 are in the buffer. As far as the site goes, the last units are on the left side of the exhibit. We have our sanitary sewer that runs through and around a tension basin, Basin 4, and then hits a manhole for a sanitary sewer and runs about perpendicular across the Zone 2 corridor. There is an existing manhole within the property, within an easement, which is shown as a double-hatched, cross-hatched. That's sanitary sewer easement, and a pipe is there today and operating. We propose to tie into a manhole with our system running right through Zone 2. Now, we are not exactly 90, because there is a wetlands piece that comes up close. A true 90, which would lessen the amount of Zone 2 impact, would clip the wetlands, so we're slightly off on a 90-degree angle.
And do you, was your firm also responsible for the preparation of what we have marked as Exhibit A7, which is an alternate sewer layout plan, conditional use plan dated March 2023?
Yes, we were.
And was a slight routing done, a rerouting done, in response to comments that were received by the township's Environmental Advisory Council and the Shade Tree Commission with respect to the overall site plan for the development?
Yes, they had some concern about saving one tree in particular, which, again, on this exhibit, our sewer main, in a prior exhibit, followed a little more circuitous route to get to our disturbed area. There is a tree in this range that was requested to be saved. So now that our land development design is done, or at least initially, our basin, the exact size of the basin has been reduced a little bit, we're able to move that sanitary sewer up towards the basin a little bit further and avoid the tree. The disturbance of the Zone 1 is the exact same on both plans, in Zone 2.
Yes, for clarification, the disturbance that's proposed as part of the conditional use application is the same under this alternate layout? And would Toll be seeking conditional use approval for this alternate layout that's still the same disturbance in the riparian buffer?
Yes, it would.
And how much is that disturbance in Zone 2 of the riparian buffer?
The total disturbance of Zone 2 is 1,023 square feet.
And have you reviewed the standards for conditional use approval that are specific to disturbance in the riparian zone under Section 1508 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, I have.
And do you believe that the applicant's proposal satisfies those standards?
Yes, we do.
One of the things that's required is re-establishment of forest cover and woodland habitat in the riparian buffer area, consistent with the township's landscaping requirements. Is that something that would be satisfied and also further detailed as part of landscaping plans during the land development process?
Yes, it would.
And is the applicant also proposing to mitigate the disturbance by widening the width of the riparian buffer area?
Yes, we are.
And specifically, can you explain for the board what is proposed in terms of mitigation on the site?
Along the edge of the Zone 2 riparian corridor, through the full length of our property, we're proposing to widen that corridor two feet, which in essence gives us a little over 2,000 square feet of additional riparian buffer.
And does the section requiring you to mitigate also require you to lengthen that area of the riparian corridor as much as possible?
Yes.
And so by increasing it two feet along the length of the riparian buffer on the site, is that maximizing the length of the riparian corridor mitigation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then finally, have you reviewed the general standards for conditional use approval in Section 1806 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, I have.
And in your opinion, to the extent that those are applicable to this specific conditional use, do you believe that the proposal complies with those standards?
Yes, I do.
I have no further questions for Mr. Baiano.
Any members of the board have questions for this witness, other than Commissioner Weingrad?
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm not sure, to be honest, it might have been a question for Brian, but let me throw it out there and we'll see. So as to the change that's being requested, right, would there be any additional impact as to whether it's construction vehicles, or dirt, or whatever might need to be part of the process to get this done for the residents that are right on the corner of Kirkwood and Montgomery there? That's probably on the other picture, but.
As far as construction and constructability, there would be no difference.
No difference for?
In fact, it's a little bit less pipe, a little bit less trenching with this alternate layout, so maybe even a little bit less.
And in theory, it would be accessed through the Fox Chase Road entrance in, right, not through?
Yes, everything would be off of Fox Chase, through our development, to the point of impact, yes.
I have, the residents that are right on the corner there had asked, that I inquired about that, and that was my assumption, but I figured you're the person to ask.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Bum.
Yes, I think you might have addressed this in the very beginning of your comments, but I just wondered, as I looked at the proposed development, why the choosing of that site, is it because of topography?
Yes, the site is sloping northeastward, towards the creek, as most water sheds would get, and that's the basics of, and the sanitary sewer is there already, yes.
Thank you.
Pardon my ignorance if this is addressed somewhere in the map. The only thing I didn't hear us talk about that I'm looking at in the articles is the need for the pipe to be located at least three feet below the stream invert? Is there somewhere on here where that's indicated?
That's the uniqueness, this is not actually crossing under the stream. This is actually just encroaching slightly into riparian corridor. That section refers to, as if our pipe was going to go all the way under and make sure we had enough clearance under the stream for our pipe, but that's not the case here.
It's not, okay, thank you.
Former Commissioner Thompson will be proud of you this evening.
Well, I should know what a stream looks like on a map, but.
Fair enough.
I tried, thank you.
Any further questions? Solicitor Clark?
There are no further questions, and there is no further testimony, and since there is no one who has party status, it would be appropriate to close the hearing and then to adjourn for a public comment.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to close the conditional use hearing?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And so I will now open it up for any public comment on the matter before the board. Please come forward, sir.
Vincent Kelly. And I live on Kirkwood Street. My property butts up against St. Basil's, and the conversation's been going on for the last two years, and I know this hearing is only specific to the sewer line. Just want to make sure that the commissioners are on top of every aspect of the development of this property, whether it's the sewer line or everything else that we discussed in the last two years, in all the Zoom meetings and all the in-person meetings. There's many residents that are being impacted by this development. We trust that Toll's going to do everything that they can to make sure that the neighbors are happy, but I want to make sure that the commissioners are on top of this, because everyone that lives close to the property is concerned about the development. We have a beautiful sunset every evening over Manor Junior College and Albatour that is going to dissipate. We understand progress, but we don't want to be distracted and not have the development be done appropriately. From the sewer line to the finished product, we all have a stake in how the property is going to be developed. We're giving up open space. This has to be done appropriately and as discussed over the last two years. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. It appears that we have a couple of residents on Zoom that would like to speak.
Cheryl Conner, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. I am actually on the corner of Montgomery and Kirkwood, so I'm trying, it's very difficult to see the plan that you laid out in front of me, and I'm, you know, I'm not an engineer, so speak in layman terms instead of exactly where, if I'm looking at the property from Fox Chase Road and I'm looking into the property, you're planning on accessing the sewer through your property to Fox Chase Road? Am I understanding that correctly? And you're going to take it all the way down to basically Montgomery and Kirkwood where I am, but on your property side? Is that correct?
Ms. Conner, this is a public comment. The hearing portion has been closed. At the beginning of the hearing, when I asked for people who wanted party status, party status would have allowed an individual to ask questions of the witnesses. This portion of the hearing, this portion is only for public comment only as the record is closed.
Okay, public comment is, I thought your meeting was starting at 7:30 tonight instead of 7 o'clock, and I was, unfortunately, did not realize that, I didn't get a chance at 7 o'clock today to talk about this, so my apologies. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of where exactly the sewer is coming in in regards to the property itself. I can't see what you have on screen for me to make a comment. I guess I have no comment then, other than I've seen surveyors out in my streets marking up my street, and I guess I'm curious as to why they would be doing so.
If I may, Cheryl, this is Drew Rothman. Good to hear from you. I had asked that question about where it was located with you in mind. If okay with you, since the way that the process here goes, I'll follow up with you directly, I'll get someone from Toll to make sure that we answer the questions for you as precisely.
Not a problem, thank you, Drew.
Yeah, sure, we'll connect early next week, how about that?
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Robert Woss, you're unmuted.
Good evening. Just want to thank Vince Kelly, he's a neighbor of mine, I'm on 608 Kirkwood, and I want to thank Drew Rothman for representing our community. The map, I wish I could have seen a preview of the map in which the engineer was speaking of. However, it sounds as though you're being prudent and careful with the environment. Perhaps Drew could communicate with me later, give me some more insight on this program. I'll share this information with my brother, he's a civil engineer and worked with the Philadelphia Water Department, and we'll just keep track of what's going on at the time, and thank you all very much for your time tonight.
This is Drew. Send me an email, and we'll find a time for us to catch up on the phone.
Thank you.
You got it.
Liz Curry, you're unmuted.
Hi, I have been listening since 7:30, when it was put out to us neighbors that this would come up at 7:30. I understand meetings are long, but what I do have issue with is how are we to know what is party status? All you have to do is say, if you have a question, you can ask it now, but to state it like that, knowing, or maybe you don't know, but I'm a nurse, I don't know what party status means, and it's kind of disingenuous to then say, oh, you can ask a question because you didn't say you wanted party status. So that's all I have to say, I'll follow up with Drew Rothman.
Thank you. I believe that was the last resident? Okay.
Now, it would be appropriate for there to be a motion to either approve the conditional use application or deny the conditional use application.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve?
Is there a second? Second? Okay. All those in favor of approving the conditional use application, please say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes our meeting.